Good afternoon. Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, City Hall Complex. Call this meeting to order. Could you please rise for the pleasure of these? Mr. Voneas, would you please start us?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a no invocation? How about call to a public? No request for call to a public? Okay, then we go all the way to presentations. A discussion, possible action, migrants situation, acting city manager in Santa Cruz County. Mr. Bermeiz?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. As you're aware, and the community is aware, commencing on September, approximately September 13th, there was an order that came down from Washington, from the Department of Homeland Security to U.S. Border Patrol, that they need to process and release, street release, all migrants that are claiming asylum. These migrants are being released in our city, and they have been released since about, approximately, September 13th. We're probably getting about over 200, between 200 and 400 migrants that are released, starting at 6:00 in the morning, up to about 3:00 in the afternoon. Now, the mayor and I, along with Emergency Management, Dr. Pereira, and other stakeholders, we met with Border Patrol, and in all fairness to them, they are just following orders from Washington. And so, it's required that they street release these individuals. At first, they were releasing them on the first 100 block of terrace. We started getting complaints from businesspeople. And so, we came back and decided to drop them off, the bus drops them off every morning, on the second 100 block of terrace. I know that Emergency Management is there from 6:00 to whenever they're done with them. The city provided a bathroom for them, and it has a lock, and the only people with a lock is Emergency Management, so the migrants can use that bathroom. We started getting complaints from businesses again, that they were going to McDonald's, use a bathroom, and stuff like that. However, they do, they do go out there and consume. You know, these migrants, for the most part, they have money. They're waiting for a ride to Tucson, from Tucson to Casalitas. They're picked up by their sponsors, which is, they're all over the U.S. So, they have a name, they have a destination. What they're looking for is transportation. Now, we are working with the county. The police department has somebody there, just to make sure that everything is in order. When they're dropped out, that there's no violence, there's nothing going on. Other than that, I can tell you that Emergency Management Director, Sobi Castro, has been doing a great job, along with Jose Arriola and the county. But at some point in time, I think, if it doesn't stop, as you all know, it's getting colder in the morning. And so, this is, might turn into a humanitarian issue here soon. What are we gonna do? I have no idea, but we can surely put our heads together and collaborate with the county. I know that I talked to County Manager Jesus Valdez, and the board of supervisors are requesting a meeting with City Council, joint meeting, to touch upon this issue with the migrants, to find out, what are we gonna do here in the coming months, coming days, coming weeks? Because it is getting colder. And sometimes, these migrants don't get picked up in a timely fashion, I guess, and so, we're gonna run into some issues. I asked Sobi, Emergency Director Castro, come and answer any questions that you might have, because I'm just touching, actually, the top. Sobi has all the information. I mean, she's the one that, with the boots on the ground, that's doing day in and day out, that's working, putting her heart and soul into this, because that's what it's taking. Again, you know, we're dealing with about approximately 400 migrants a day, seven days a week. So, Sobi, could you get up to the podium and?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I don't know if you guys have additional questions for myself. My name is Sora Castro. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Santa Cruz County. And as Roy Benwood has mentioned, that is correct. We've been on site since September 13th. It's seven days a week, 20, from 7:00 in the morning, or 6:30 in the morning, all the way up till 7:00, 7:30 in the morning at night. The operation is transportation only at this time. We pick, we basically get vans, or some type of small transportation. We transport these individuals to NGOs, nonprofit organization shelters. One is located in Tucson, Arizona, which is Casasalitas. And then, we have another one that is located in Phoenix, which is IRC. Our concern, as Roy has mentioned, is not only the fact that the numbers have increased, because at the beginning, on September 13th, the releases were around 200. Now, we're going up until 400 releases per day. Not only that, the weather, but also, this weekend, we experienced that Casasalitas and the other IR, and the other shelters, like IRC, were at almost full capacity. So, we were trying to figure out during the weekend, what we were gonna do with these migrants. And we were almost at a breaking point in these shelters. So, our concern, and we have spoken, I've spoken with the mayor and Mr. Redmudas in regards to this, where once these NGOs are at full capacity, then therefore, we will have the street release here in Nogales. The transportation, so transportation is coordinated by Emergency Management. So, we have a fund that we currently operate. This fund is extended all the way up to December 31st, and it is only currently for transportation. So, in the case being that these NGOs are at full capacity, then therefore, we will be releasing in Nogales, Arizona. The transportation will stop, because there's no place for them, to receive them further north. If you guys have additional questions for me, I don't mind answering any.
Councilwoman Varese?
Has the federal government or the state provided any additional resources? Are we getting reimbursed for everything that we're doing at this time? And do they have any immediate plans for temporary shelters?
I can't really answer for the federal government. Under the state, we have a fund, which we have currently right now, that we have $230,000. That is called the Emergency Food and Shelter Program. That is what's gonna cover me up until December 31st. That is for either transportation and/or sheltering. The county, as of today, we haven't, I guess, decided if we were going to open a shelter yet. They haven't given me the authorization to open anything at this time, but we are currently only doing transportation. That will cover, the $250,000 will cover me up until December 31st. Now, there are other fundings that there are available. We don't know if then, the city or the state is able to apply for these. They're not open yet. We're still waiting to see if they open additional funding, but currently, we only have this amount. So, the county has decided to use these $230,000 just for transportation right now, because if we decide to open up a shelter, this $230,000 will not be, it'll only last us maybe two or three weeks. Because calculating the amount of migrants we're receiving, calculating the toiletries that we would give them, the food, any additional resources that they need, we're approximately estimating around $10,000 per day. And that will only take us up to maybe three weeks. So, therefore, we have decided to only stick with transportation, and we are able to pay for these buses, for them to move to a destination where they are able to get transportation, for example, like airplanes and buses, or trains, where they are able to transport easily.
Go ahead. Mr. Varese?
On these individuals that are being street released, are these individuals that are being detained elsewhere outside the county, and then bused into our communities? Or are they the ones that are caught locally, or admitted locally?
What I have heard from the Border Patrol station is, unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not exactly sure how to word this. Border Patrol, the Nogales Sector, has created a new detention center. So, therefore, we are one of the largest detention centers that exists in the southwest border. So, yes, they are transporting individuals from different counties or different cities, and they are bringing them here. They are processed here, and then they are released, correct?
Councilwoman Varese? That's the information that we had, because we talked, there was a couple of hour meeting. So, they're bringing them from the east side, which is Lukeville, that area right there. Like Sobi says, they, we have the biggest, or Border Patrol has the biggest detention facility. Border Patrol is in the process of building one right now, which would house more people than they have right now. So, they're hoping that in the next coming weeks, they're finished with that, and the amount of people that they would drop off in Nogales would go down, and more people would be dropped off in Tucson. So, that's the hopes that we have right now, but we can't really bank on that. So, we're trying to come up with, what are we gonna do? What are we doing now? What are we gonna do in the future, as it gets colder?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Montiel.
Sobi, is that your first name or last name?
It's Soveda.
Soveda, okay. First of all, thank you for what you're doing. I know it's a lot of work. And regardless if you're on the right or left, you know, this is a human issue, and it's heartbreaking to see them being dropped off. Like all human beings, they deserve to be treated. And I know it's a federal issue, but I commend you and the city and the county for doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sobi, you know, and I talked to Adid, in charge for the Border Patrol, Mr. Bermeiz, yesterday, and that detention center is open already, but it's not at 100%. So, they're already taking, and as when we talked, they're sending, this is for single adults going into that detention center. So, the questions that, you know, that we've talked, and, you know, we've all been in the loop, and, you know, trying to help each other. I really appreciate the hard work you've done, and, you know, keeping Mr. Bermeiz up intact, and anything we need to support or work with. But people have called me, and I've also, when they call me, I directed to, I know I directed to Mr. Bermeiz, and he calls you, about donating waters, donating stuff. Have they been able to get to you, you know, waters and stuff like that?
Yes.
You know, there's people in the community interested, you know, churches and all that. You know, do I continue to send through Mr. Bermeiz, and then to you? You know, so they made contact. I haven't been, I haven't been wanting to give anybody your personal number, because I know you've been probably bombarded with calls and all that. So, that's what I've been doing. But is that the correct avenue to take?
Currently, we are managing the donation management. So, the Office of Emergency Management within the county is going to manage that, the donations, and they can either email myself, or call our office number. And then, we are setting up some type of database, where we're gonna keep track of everything. Tomorrow, we're gonna receive a donation from a local church, with waters and some baby formula and bottles. Because right now, the issue that we're facing is that since they're releasing more migrants, I'm keeping them for a longer time. So, now, before was, I was keeping them for an hour, an hour and a half, now I'm keeping them for two or three hours, because I don't have transportation. And we're coordinating day by day, depending on the NGOs, if they have capability. So, they're staying there a little bit longer, and we are usually giving them water or snacks, but now, we're running to a point where we have family units with toddlers that need supplies like that. So, I asked the church if they could give us a couple of formula, a couple of bottles, because we had to purchase some yesterday, because there was a couple of toddlers within that group.
Okay. Now, the other thing is, as far as getting, you know, support, you know, speaking with, you know, senators, congressmen, the governor, what else? How else can I help you? You know, is it the funding, the main thing that we look at, or transportation? I've always said, you know, the day we lose our transportation, then we'll, then, you know, we're gonna have big problems.
I think currently, funding, the funding that we currently have for transportation is enough currently. I think where we need support is the staffing. So, since the Border Patrol releases since early morning, and we need to have somebody there present from 7:00 in the morning, all the way until 7:00 o'clock at night. So, having somebody present there, staffing, would be a great support for the county. We are limited in staffing resources. In the grant, the $230,000, I am unable to right now hire any individual. It's only for transportation. But I'm trying to find different venues where I am able, then, I'm researching this grant to see if there's a venue where I am able to hire somebody. But right now, that is the major, I guess, component that we really need at this time is staffing. And it's a Monday through Sunday operation, 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 o'clock at night.
Is it possible to get volunteers?
Yes, we have reached out to several organizations, and we do have an application and a waiver that these individuals may apply. But we have reached out to them, we sent them the information, but nobody has forwarded anything to our emails.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Voneas?
How many buses are we talking about, daily? Three, four, five buses daily?
So, in the morning, at the beginning, September 1st, we started with one in the morning, one at 12:00. So, one at 7:00 in the morning, one at 12:00, and then one at 5:00 PM. We now are currently, two at 7:00 in the morning, one at 12:00, one at 3:00, and maybe three at 6:00. So, we have approximately six to seven buses per day.
So, what happens to the people who can't catch a bus that stay on, do they stay on terrace overnight?
This is the issue, and both the mayor and Roy are aware of this. We are unable to force these migrants to get on any transportation. So, once these individuals arrive at terrace, then we advise them that we have free transportation, that they would be going to a shelter, that this shelter will then help them provide further transportation, so they can read their, they could reach their destination. But they are not obligated to stay with us at any time. So, in a given time, if these migrants, by 6:00 PM, if they do not board, then yes, they do stay here locally. Once they get released by Border Patrol, and they have their legal documentation, they are free to do anything that they would like.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention that Border Patrol, the reason they're dropped on terrace, because Border Patrol is mandated to drop them off where there is access to transportation. Getting back to that, I've heard of several migrants taking Ubers, calling Ubers, taking shuttles, taking taxis. They wanna get to the airport, they wanna get to their final destination, and obviously, it's not here, it's not in Tucson. So, and then to make it more difficult, the majority of them do not speak English, or do not speak Spanish.
Yes.
And they have no idea where they're at. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sobi, but I commend you for what you're doing.
You are correct.
How many language are you up to?
We have like around, maybe 15 different languages.
It's a hard task, you know, like, again, you know. But I think, you know, anything else, anybody, you know, Sobi, again, you know, I really appreciate, and I hope, the one thing also, and, you know, Sobi, you correct me if I'm wrong, I want the public to know that these migrants get checked at the Border Patrol, both, you know, for records, or for health-wise, and then the release. If there's anybody with any health issues, they are directed to the hospital, correct?
That is correct.
You know, they're not just dropping off anybody out in the streets. You know, once they get their papers, it means pretty much that they're giving them, you know, or us, the city, the blessing, that they've been checked.
That is correct.
Right, thank you. I appreciate Sobi for coming down and keeping us informed, and hopefully, we'll continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Bermeiz, thank you. Go to presentation B, presentation by Demis Seymour, regarding Coronado Expedition Archaeological
Great, thank you very much for giving me some time with you tonight. I have a very exciting find. In June 2020, I became aware of some artifacts in a collection that were related to the Vasquez de Coronado Expedition of 1540 to 1542. The question was, is where did they come from? And it took a little bit of sleuthing, but I figured it out, and that's relevant to city and private land. Marcus Daniza before him, who did reconnaissance, came through the area in 1539 to 1542. There were nearly 400 Europeans, not all of them Spaniards, 2,000 indigenous Mexican warriors, and an unrecorded number of support people, domestic servants and slaves. About 2,800 people came through this area, and thousands of head of livestock. Now, prior to this discovery, as you see in the red, on the red star there, there was no known, there were no known Coronado Expedition sites anywhere in Arizona. Sites from this expedition have been found in New Mexico and Texas, but not here in Arizona. In fact, this is the first Coronado Expedition sites, site, that archaeologists had found between the start point in Sinaloa, Mexico, and Zuni, New Mexico, as you see. I don't have anything to point with here, but as you can see in the upper center there of the image. Since then, I've been working on this for three years. We now have six Coronado Expedition sites, maybe seven. The sixth one, we found just last week. These are verified as definitely relating to Coronado. They're along four different drainages, and some of them are spaced hundreds of miles apart. The one with the red dot is the one that I'm going to talk about this evening. Now, the red line shows the approximate route that I'm reconstructing based on where our sites are, and as you can see, there's possibly two routes. The one begins here in Nogales. It doesn't actually begin here, but I'm not going across the border. Most scholars, for quite some time, have thought that Coronado came up the Sonora River Valley, and then up to San Pedro. So, having a site here on the Santa Cruz is real important and eye-opening, really quite a surprise. This is, the purple kinda shows where one of the potential routes that people have said in the past, scholars have said in the past, where they went up to San Pedro, and then turned, maybe even went straight up to San Pedro. But ours represents the red line there. And so, we may have, in another few weeks, we may have a seventh site. The site I'm gonna talk about tonight, though, is relevant, most relevant to you all, is here near Nogales, as shown, circled in red there. Now, this is the most important of all the sites that I have found. It's the most important of the six. It's also the first site that I found. And the reason it's important is, first of all, it's the first European settlement. It's a town site in the American Southwest, so it's a first European settlement in the American Southwest. And it's a town site, which is really very important. That's a legal entity. Now, the other reason it's incredibly important is it's the first successful Native American uprising in the continental U.S. Also, it's incredibly important, because on the site, we found the earliest firearm ever discovered on the entire continent, not including in the water, because there's a bunch of ones floating around out there, I mean, sunk out there, that nobody knows for sure how they're associated. We also have the first firearm associated with the Coronado Expedition. So, these are the three most important things about the find, but there's many things that are important about this site. Now, the site, like I said, is the first European settlement in the American Southwest, which is a huge deal. It's like number three within the entire continental U.S., okay? It's called San Huronimo, and it was the third place that San Huronimo was located. With San Huronimo III is what we call it in the Souya Valley. So, the Santa Cruz Valley was called the Souya Valley. The site is incredibly sizable. It's a kilometer long, which is 10 football fields long. It has six lookout stations, three of which were burned. This place was attacked. Importantly, like I said, it's a town site, so it has Spanish structures. It was intended to be permanent. Now, there are hundreds of Coronado-specific artifacts on the site. There are household items and battle-related items, and there's patterning in the artifacts. I give a much longer talk, where I talk about the significance of that, but I won't go into that now. This is the main excavation area. We've been excavating from 2021 to 2023, meaning June, we backfilled. The dark you see is brush that we cut to keep the cattle out of the excavation area. The, if I could point, I don't see anything to point with. The rectangular thing in the middle is where the Spanish structure is. It's a rectangular, adobean rock structure, and the cannon was on the floor of that structure, which is why we decided to dig that. We were at the excavations for 14 months, and over a couple of different seasons, filled, backfilling it during the summer monsoons to protect it. Turns out, it was 2,500 square feet. That's bigger than many people's houses. That's why it took us so long. And we moved up to about 140 tons of dirt, screening it through two different sizes of We backfilled it when we finished, to preserve it, and we used some of the rocks that were inside the fill to stabilize it, so it doesn't, the dirt doesn't wash out down slope. We're hoping that the grass will grow. I was out there the other day, and it was starting to grow back, but there wasn't as much rain this season. The yellow outline here is the outline of the structure, and you can see pink, which are what we call features, things that are intruded from, were later in time, like subiprion pits and so on. And then, the blue ones represent an earlier occupation that we call archaic. They're pre-ceramic people. It was a pit house village before our Coronado material. The pit house village dates to a couple hundred years before Christ, and we only dug one of those archaic pit houses, early agricultural pit houses, because we wanted to preserve it rather than dig it. I wasn't interested in that aspect of the history. So, this is what the structure, the Coronado structure looks like, and you can see, we have dates from the 1500s, from the mid-1500s. So, there's no question that's what it is. It has partition walls, it has pits and so on, and that's what it looks like. Oops, yeah, sorry. There are, there's an incredibly high frequency of Coronado artifacts on the site as a whole, and there's a high diversity. And this represents the household items, things that people would have used during their daily activities, including fish hooks and a range of other things. Notice the early Ming Chinese ware up on the top, which is consistent with the Coronado period. It dates to about that period. So, we have an incredibly high diversity of artifacts, a high density of Coronado artifacts, and this contributes to the notion that this occupation was intended to be of a long duration, of a permanent type, of a town. They established a town here. We also have a lot of horse gear, including on the upper left and the bottom right, nails and horseshoe fragments that are definitively Coronado. They're two of the types of items that tell us that it's a Coronado site, and many other items, as you can see. This is just a sample. From inside the structure, we have glass shards, we have green glazed ceramics, we have native ceramics, that in fact, we dated to that 1550 plus or minus 30 date. And then, we have mahalika and Chinese wares as well, that came out of the structure. And then we have mahalica and Chinese wares as well that came out of the structure. So the site is incredibly important from the standpoint of all of these artifacts, from the standpoint of it being the first settlement, European settlement in this entire region, entire Southwest. It was intended to be a permanent town site. But what's also important about this, and what was most surprising, relates to the native inhabitants of the site, the Sabipa yatom, who are the direct ancestors of the people at San Javier, the Wak yatom, the, who are now members of the Tona yatom Nation. First of all, most scholars, almost all scholars, thought that what Coronado was talking about was the Opata, a group in Sonora. But in fact, they're talking about the yatom. The yatom are central to this Coronado story, so it's totally local here. The other thing that's really important is the battle that occurred at this site. Now, the documents talk about the battle. And one of the comments that's made, I'll read it. "One night unexpectedly, they saw fires that were not usual or customary, which caused them to double the watches." This is talking about the Spaniards. "But since they sensed nothing during the whole night, at least at dawn, they let their guard down and the enemies entered the town so quietly that they were not seen until they were killing and robbing. Some people were somehow able to reach the plane. And upon their leaving, the Sabipa mortally wounded the captain. And as some Spaniards regrouped on some horses, they turned, excuse me, on the enemies and helped some of the people, although it was few. And the enemies left with the booty without receiving injury, leaving three Spaniards dead and many servants and more than 20 horses." Now, the reason is because they were being mistreated. More than two-thirds of their produce and resources were being taken. The captain was sleeping with the wives and daughters, and they were mutilating people at the village. Excuse me. So we have archaeological evidence of this battle as well. We have chainmail links on the upper left and plate armor on the lower left. We have crossbow bolt heads, we have lance head, sword belt buckle and so on. So we have a diversity of battle-related items. And there's patterning in these battle-related items as well, including weapons and ammunition. And also the breakage patterns are consistent with the battle. One of the things that we have is lots of crossbow bolt heads, both iron and copper. We're the first site to have iron crossbow bolt heads in addition to copper. The crossbows go out by the end of the expedition and replaced by more efficient weapons like matchlocks and wheellocks. So we know they belong to the Coronado Expedition. And so, since no Europeans were here for another 150 years, they're high, what we say is highly diagnostic. They tell us definitely the Coronado was here. So there's no question that this is a Coronado site. We have lots of crossbow bolt heads. We also have pieces of matchlocks and wheellocks in the upper left there. We have a sword tip, we have lots of dagger blades and sword parts and so on, and lead shot, all relating to the battle. We have arms of the land, which are the types of weapons that the poor Europeans had, the, who couldn't afford the crossbows or the muskets. And also, the native warriors also had these. We also have green obsidian from central Mexico that were edging the wooden swords they call maquedles. And we have a lot of pieces of these. These are originate, the green obsidian originates down further south in Mexico. And we have a green Sabipa arrowhead. And then we have the cannon, bronze cannon. Here's some detailed information about it. It's 40 pounds and 42 inches long. It was found in the room that burned and it was resting on the floor, which is why we dug that. It was made in Mexico. We've written a couple of articles on it and I don't want to go into the minute details, but basically the composition of it and the crudeness of it suggests that it was made in Mexico rather than in a nice foundry in Europe that would not have let it out without finishing it in certain ways. And I work with specialists who've conveyed some of this information to me. It was not discharged during the battle, but it was probably used for display violence to scare everybody into compliance, right? Like I said, it's the earliest known gun on the continent. We also have Sabipa arrowheads, Sabipa yatom arrowheads and possible sling stones. We, you can, it's hard to see, but I'll show you another image here. But basically what we have is clear evidence of pitched battle in the distribution of the crossbow bolt heads and other items. Here you can see the red dots are where all of the crossbow bolt heads and metal arrowheads and so on were found. We can see where the arrows are, where the yatom entered the town. And then we can see the Europeans being chased across the landscape. Here I've added, in the turquoise, I've added the Sabipa, stone Sabipa arrowheads, just the ones that are on the surface, because they don't pick up on the metal detector. And you can see how many there are just with the surface ones. We also have metal arrow and lance heads of various types and lead shot and so on. So we have clear evidence of the battle and also where the heat of the battle occurred. So we have a lot of battle evidence, but what's really interesting as well is we have some documentary accounts from later in time, which I'm only going to go into one, but because this also relates to the battle. But we're starting to identify some of the people who were actually there, some of the Spaniards. And one of the later accounts that was published in 1584, Obdrogon, says, "They plundered and destroyed everything in the town without leaving a person alive in it. Only a friar and five soldiers escaped. And like a brave man, he defended these from their enemies with his broadsword." Okay? So we haven't, and this account was from one of those five soldiers that survived, so it's a reliable account. Well, I figured out who this guy is. His name is Fray Daniel El Italiano. And the reason that it has to be him is all the other friars who were on the trip, and there were five, are accounted for. This guy in Marcos Denez turned back at Siebla, at Zuni. Marcos Denez went all the way back. Most people have assumed he did as well. But unless there's other friars that they didn't mention in the documents, this is him. So we've got one of the guys, one of the heroes of the story, if you want to put it that way, from the Spanish standpoint, identified. And here's the really cool thing. He was a master embroiderer. And we have literally dozens of needles, fine needles, that we found on the site. These are just the ones that have the eyelets and a pin there too. Very tiny little needles. And these are the kinds of needles that you'd, that you'd use for embroidery. So there may be a connection there. We also have two pieces of small scissors that he might have used. So the story's starting to become more enriched as we find more things and as we learn more about the people that were there. What we know is that 100 of the settlers were killed. And that means that there were four Spaniards killed. And then the rest of the people were probably servants and slaves and Mexican natives, the Indios Amigos. No Sabipa were killed during this. They really took them by surprise and they were incredible warriors. Now, importantly, the Europeans didn't return for another 150 years when we have Father Quino come into the area. This makes this the first successful Native American uprising in the entire continental U.S. Prior to this, the Puebla Revolt in the Santa Fe area of 1680 was considered the most important and successful revolt. But the Spaniards returned after 12 years. They called themselves, they referred to their revolt as the first American revolution. That makes this 150 years earlier, the first American revolution. So quite important. So this is one of the most important, if not the most important historical site in Arizona. It's equivalent to Roanoke, Jamestown, Williamsburg, San Augustine and Santa Fe. But it's 150 years earlier, okay? At least 150 years early. It's actually a lot earlier than that in some cases. It was established 500 years ago in 1541. And when this battle occurred, it was destroyed and abandoned. And it probably occurred in the fall of that year, probably November is what I'm thinking. This importantly is a world-class site that needs to be studied and preserved. The reason I want to study it in part is because I want to promote its importance to local, regional, national and international audiences. In that line, when I found the site, about three months later is when I found the cannon, I realized that this find was bigger than myself, bigger than an academic paper. So I contacted a local filmmaker, an Emmy award-winning filmmaker, Francis Cosi, and said, "This needs to be recorded as a documentary." Well, she finished, it's fantastic, and it's going to be shown at the Loft Film Festival on October 14th. And there's four tickets left, so get on your phones and... But she did a fantastic job. And it's, the first place that it's being sold is in Australia. And we think it's partially because of the indigenous or Aboriginal occupants there who went through some of the same experiences as the natives here. So the yatom play a major role in this story that we're telling and developing and so on. There's a number of videos I've made on my YouTube page. You have my card, I passed it around. And then also some articles that are on my academia page, okay? I'm not going to belabor this, but one last thing I would like to do is I'm going to show you a two-minute trailer, if that's okay? And then I'm going to show you the trophy. Let's see here. I think I know what I'm doing. Did he say this? Yeah, okay, sorry.
[inaudible] Which horse here on the bottom part is that? But it turns out that this was a cow in 1540. So this was a European settlement. You're looking now, drawing the levels, that this is the death of San Huronimo III. You'll see the valley. This site is important, well, but came first. So your direct ancestors are the people that needed these first Europeans. And there was a major pitched battle. This is the site, the northern, the first major defeat out of Spanish forces. That makes this the first American revolution. This was a very powerful, effective resistance. We now have the opportunity to put forward progress. Let's film right here.
She's got the smoke.
So it's here. It's not coming soon. So I am going to... I'm going to show you the cannon and I'm going to get some help to take it out, because I hurt myself getting it out of the vehicle. I'm trying to delete this, I can't delete it. Hopefully I got big enough once. Okay, ready? It's heavy, isn't it? So it's bronze and it was sandcast. It has its touch ball here, which is a flat pan. It wasn't finished, it has no maintenance mark. And those are two of the reasons why we think it was made in Mexico. In addition, it has, I remember, he did PXRF and... It's missing something that it would have if it's made here. I'm sorry. Anyway, it has a hook here, that's why we call it a wall then, or rampart. And that had a rest in on the wall absorbs a little bit of kickback. You're probably asking what's going to happen to this. I'm going to sell it to some Saudi prince. It's fully insured so that that doesn't happen. I'm personally paying for that myself. Then if it's going to be curated, it becomes a museum, along with the other artifacts. We hope they have it not left out. City property. Care with it, which is why it transferred from an archaeological artifact to a museum piece, which is why we're wearing the gloves now, because this has vertigress on it, which is like patination that happens over 500 years. And you can't reconstruct that. So it's, the oils on people's hands ruin it. So we're now attributing it even more care than when we first found it. I mean, when we first found it, there were boots wrapped around it. And I put my hand on it to protect it from the saw that we had to use to cut the root. And I was like, what am I doing, cutting my hands off here? But it was pristine when we took it out. But anyway, there it is.
Danny, just to put in context, more context for the council, all this archaeological study is being done on city property pursuant to agreement with Ms. Seymour. We were going to present to you a continuation of that, of that permission to continue doing the research, but it didn't make the agenda for whatever reason. But we'll put it back on for that. So all you see here and everything that was in the presentation was done pursuant to the permission that the city granted for the research.
I have permits. I'm a professional archaeologist. And so it worked out beautifully because I already had a permit. So I've renewed the permit and so on. So basically, we have a right of entry. I have permission from all the landowners who own portions of the land. And we're hoping that all of the collections and everything will come together. And then the landowners surrounding it are keeping people out to the best they can and trying to help protect it. They understand how important it is. In fact, they're welcoming me now as a neighbor. They said, "Hello, neighbor," because I now have a town site right there, so.
Is there, so are you done with that area or are you still?
No, in fact, that's one reason I'm here.
Is there surrounding areas you're looking into?
Correct, so...
Does the journey go through there? You know, is there parts of Mexico that have you done?
I have not done Mexico. So first of all, I'm still working on the site and I want to do some more excavation. I want to do just enough excavation to prove beyond reasonable people's doubts that it is in fact a town site. And then I'll stop. And then the tradition is to wait 30 or 50 years before anybody digs it again to preserve it, because it's a one-of-a-kind site. I am going to go to the Gila, finding more sites. I've talked to Ina in Mexico, because I think I know where the route goes down there. But the problem is we had to stop because of cartels. I mean, we were going to go last year and they said, "All of our archaeologists pulled out it." So I may do that. The problem is they require funding and I am personally funded with my retirement funds. So I do my own research, my research on my own funds. And they want about 30 grand. And I said, "I can't pay for your people. I can do it for free, but I can't pay for your people." So we'll see whether I go to Mexico, but I think I know where the route goes down there. But we're still working here north of the border. And we're going to be working here quite a bit. It takes a lot of work to find it.
My father always said that it went all the way through, around Peña Blanca Lake and crossed through the Red Mountains. So he always has, "Look at it." And we never, that's a fact, but we have it, never, we're never did.
Sounds like you have some information I need to look at. Sounds like you have some information I need to look at.
Ms. Montiel, you had a question? Now, is there something the city needs to do to preserve that area? Or, you know, have you been talking to Joe, our attorney, on what, you know, how we go about, what's the plan for our needs to preserve that area?
So at some point, sooner than later, probably since things are starting to get out, I think we need to get together with the other landowners in the area and decide on a plan, including fencing and some kind of monitoring. Because, like I said, it's such an important site. And we have a lot of work yet to do. One of the things that I'm trying to do is do enough work that if somebody comes in and starts metal detecting, they won't get anything and won't ruin anything. So when we metal detect, we do it systematically, and we put tags down and GPS them so we know where everything is. And we're hoping that people won't come in and destroy things. But if they do, nothing will be left, is the goal. You know, nothing related to this is what I mean. So of things that their metal detector will pick up, right? So, because they can destroy the other culture that's there. So eventually, we do need to talk about preservation, fencing, monitoring, and so on. I think it's super important. And I've talked to the other landowners about that, that they're all on board. So it's just a matter of everybody getting together, so.
Does the government protect these areas? Is it down to the city or is it...
Well, I will say that, well, no plans have been put in place yet because it's not for me to say because I don't own any of it. I have a donor who would be interested in potentially buying the surface rights to make sure that it's preserved. And then put that with the other plots so that the surface part then becomes either a national monument or a landmark or something that's protected in a way that it's overseen and then is properly interpreted. It's as big as anything else we have here in Arizona. It's bigger than most of the things that are already parks and so on. So it's, yeah.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Joe? We'll be talking. We'll be talking. I really appreciate, you know, everything you're doing there. And it's amazing what you found. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I guess next time you'll go over the agreement, the...
Yes.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to pull this out now, so.
Yep. Yeah. Can we have two people help her, please? I have boy mistakes.
Got arms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. That was great. Item six, Proclamations. A proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Ms. Montiel, please.
Okay, thank you, it's my honor. Thank you, Susan, for being here and all of you. Okay. Whereas violence against women and children continues to be a social problem due to the imbalance of power and gender and age. And whereas approximately one in four women and one in even men in the United States will experience domestic violence at some point in their life. And whereas 15.5 million children in the United States live in families, live in families in which domestic violence occurred at least once in the past year. And 7 million children live in families in which severe domestic violence occurred. And whereas only one quarter of all physical assaults, one-fifth of all rapes, and one-half of all stalking incidents perpetrated against women by intimate partners are reported to police. And whereas the damage caused by domestic violence is not limited by gender, age, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting society as a whole. And whereas public awareness has the potential to increase the identification and reporting of abuse of the public, professionals, and victims themselves, and can act as a catalyst to promote issued-based education and long-term prevention. Now therefore, I, George Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, hereby proclaim the 3rd of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month.
Thank you.
Susan? Susan, can you please come up?
Thank you. And we had, we had the ceremony, what was it, last Thursday?
Monday.
Monday?
Monday, last Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll never forget this.
And this is another one of our survivors as well, Cynthia.
Cynthia, yeah, thank you.
So we can thank you all. And I think together we can at least try to make a difference in this.
That's what it takes, get together. Thank you, huh? Thank you very much, Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia. Susan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to add a little bit in recognition of Domestic Violence Month, our officers are wearing a purple patch. Assistant Chief, could you stand up and show your, the patch? And that's in recognition, to pay honor for domestic violence.
I saw it on the vehicles also.
Yes.
A bow on the vehicles, thank you, chief. Next, we go to B, Proclamation Santa Cruz County Arts Month. Councilor, Monse Lopez.
Proclamation to raise awareness of and build public support for the importance of the arts in Santa Cruz County, where the arts celebrate the human experience through creative expression and communities unite through cultural and artistic experiences. Whereas research shows that creating and experiencing art can lower stress and anxiety. It also has the ability to help create and strengthen a sense of place. The arts can improve academic achievement, improve memory, enhance critical thinking skills, build confidence and self-esteem, and create stronger cultural and personal connections with communities. Whereas the goal of Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Alfredo Velazquez in 2023 is to raise community awareness about the various arts organizations in Santa Cruz County and the many programs they offer for all ages. The Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Office will highlight these inspiring events in the month of October. And will also host various programs and events to celebrate the great work of our students and local professional artists. Whereas Santa Cruz County Arts Month is sponsored by the Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Office, Santa Cruz Advocates for the Arts, La Linea Art Studio on Morley, Hilltop Gallery, Tuba Center of the Arts, Santa Cruz Foundations for the Performing Arts, Borderland Theater, Holer &amp; Sanders LTD, Cultural Arts Committee of Nogales and Mexican Consulate, Santa Cruz County, City of Nogales, Nogales Unified School District 1, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District 35, Patagonia Public Schools District 6 and 20, Sonora Elementary District 25, Santa Cruz Elementary District 28, Shutter Schools and Private Schools. Whereas during the month of October, informative messages will be communicated to the community via social media, radio, and signage concerning the arts in Santa Cruz County with themes including the Santa Cruz County School Superintendent's Office, promoting local and arts organizations, art leadership awards, arts night walk, art exhibition, educational forum, mural projects and workshops, and artistic gatherings. Therefore, Jorge Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Santa Cruz County Arts Month.
Thank you.
Oh, and I... And one. Anyone else out there? Oh, not so many.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
It's a tile.
I got one. Of course. Thank you. It was nice. It's pretty, thank you. I love these ones.
Thank you very much, and great job. Next, we move to item seven, Financial Monthly Report. A financial report, August 2023. Ms. Jean?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. What you have before you is the finance report for August of 2023. After two months, we should be right about 16.66% if you look at the budget. If you look at Table A, you will notice for our general fund, our revenues are $5,147,520, which is actually 19%. And our expenditures are at $7,384,184, which is also 19%. We also have our shared revenues on this page on Table A. And that is at $1,810,927, which is 16%. If you move on to Table B, that is our sales tax. And for August, we collected $852,786. This actually was less than August of last year. So we're currently $202,287 below this point of August of last year. If you move on to Table C, that is your breakdown of the general fund departments. And that's where you'll also see the total expenditures of $7,384,184. You will also see the departments that are above the 16.66%. A lot of that is due to those, the annual contracts and large capital purchases that we do at the beginning. If you now move on to Table D, that is our HERF and overweight. For HERF, we have collected $467,182, which is 18%. And overweight fees, we've collected $91,753, which is 37%. And for expenditures for HERF, we've expended out $540,000, I'm sorry, $540,092, which is 13%. And for overweight fees, $13,793, which is 2%. If you move on to Table E, this is our sewer fund. And for sewer, we have received in $618,180, which is 21%. And we have expended out $650,278, which is 27%. For Table F is our water fund. We have collected $711,458, which is 21%. And expended out $1,323,737, which is 22%. And the final table is Table G, which is our sanitation. We have collected $499,583, which is 18%. And we have expended out $469,525, which is 13%. Are there any questions on that portion?
Mr. Grados?
I think I pointed this out last month, but again, another month with a deficit in our sales tax. And it's not just a small amount, we're a couple hundred thousand. And then losses in our water, which I think we're addressing with some down in the later part of the agenda. But September's already gone. Did we see, or can you tell us if you saw the same type of downfall? And is that something that we need to start looking at?
September looked a little bit better. It'd be nice to see those million-dollar numbers. I can't guesstimate, you know, how much is going to come in every month. I can just say, please shop local. You know, try to support our city as much as you can. Every penny counts for, you know, towards our revenue. Usually July is a little bit higher due to the fact that that's when people purchase their school supplies. August goes down a little bit because now school has started, vacations have stopped. September is where we should start to see the turn up. And by October is when they're starting to purchase their Christmas presents. And that's usually when we start to see the higher numbers coming in, is October, November, December, and January. So I keep watching. I keep looking at our accounts, waiting for the numbers to come in.
So, as you know, Morley is closed, the port?
Yes.
You know it's closed. How do you think that will affect the next few months?
I'm hoping and praying.
We all hope.
I know, we're all hoping. But I'm really hoping that those people, even if they have to go.
Have you planned for that?
We haven't really yet. I'm hoping that people still will continue to go down to Morley. I know that we have a restaurant that will be opening up down there soon. And I'm hoping that draws more people down towards Morley.
Okay. On the bed tax here, it seems like in spite of some of the things, a sales tax decreasing, but the bed tax revenue is coming in. I mean, in August was $32,000. Do you expect that trend to go up in September?
As long as people continue to come visit us as a city.
Do you expect that trend to continue?
I haven't seen the bed tax for September yet. I can...
Yeah, but do you expect the trend to continue to increase? Because it's increasing, which is a good thing.
I hope it does. I can't predict what anybody does spend, but if you drive by our hotels, our hotels are pretty full.
Yeah.
And so if that, if just seeing what we see in town?
Yeah.
Then...
So, so do you think, I'm, we just gave money to the Chamber of Commerce. And I think kudos to them too, because that helps, their advertising constantly is helping to bring in that bed tax.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So it's a win-win situation?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
And plus we're, we got also the lanes issued, Ms. Jean. So, you know, there's less lanes to get across. Unfortunately, we're getting, you know, three to six hours in lines. So I hope that, you know, I've been pushing with the, actually, the mayor from Nogales Sonora, about even the sentry people were complaining. I think we got it straight yesterday, where they're, everybody knows that they're putting an officer more or less where the, below the bridge by the gas station. So they'll let the sentry people that have sentry come in and cut in and not do the full three-hour, four-hour lines, you know, before they get into their own lane. So yesterday, actually, Mr. Bermudas was a test of that because he went yesterday afternoon and the officers were there. And that was maybe two, three hours. and the officers were there and that was maybe two, three hours after my call with, with the secretary of, of the mayor over there. So hopefully we, we could continue to collaborate together and get these crossings faster.
Absolutely.
You know.
Mayor.
Yes, that's it.
On that note, how, why would the Mexican government, since you communicate a lot with them, why would they start this project in, you know, the middle of knowing the migrant situation and the lanes? And now they decide to renovate or that Morley Crossing Port? What, what do they tell you?
Ms. Montiel, you know, it was, first it was, first it was the migrants, you know, slapped in the face. Then it was the, the closing of the lanes. Then it was the Morley Avenue. And, you know, it was, well, what's next? But, um, talking to, to the governor, talking to both consulates, uh, you know, it was one of those things, do it or lose it. And that's what, what it became done, you know. I, I had a call with the governor and we talked about, you know, the timing and everything. I talked to a couple of local businesses and, you know, for us, you know, first changing, uh, closing traffic lane or car lanes and then closing the pedestrian lane, you know, was, was tough. Unfortunately, uh, it was so beyond, uh, in advance approved and, and ready. Unfortunately, the communication from, from federal, because this is a federal issue, was not related to neither CBP Nogales or CBP USA, nor the city of Nogales till like five days prior to doing the, the decision. And, you know, to, by the time I was making calls and everything, they already had started demolishing. You know, so unfortunately, uh, you know, and I, you know, went back and forth with the council, uh, excuse me, the consul, you know, about the timing, the decision, the, you know, what happened to the communication and all that. And unfortunately, we, we didn't have it there. And, or they related it in a technical way.
I just think our big thing is we need to remind people to shop here. I just bought a Kinsay dress downtown. Thank you, Evan. It's not for me, but it's beautiful.
Yeah, but, you know, and that's what I say, you know, hopefully we, you know, I've been pushing every day. I communicate with Border Patrol and, and trying to see when, when they're gonna give back the, the CBP workers so we get our flow of, of open lanes again. And which that's, that's my biggest push right now.
Right, right.
Right. Thank you.
Um, the second part of the report is the water sewer and delinquent, um, reports and miscellaneous. We currently have six thousand one hundred and fifty active utility accounts. We have ninety-one active delinquent accounts that are on contract. Currently, that total is eighty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. It decreased five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents from last month with an increase of three contracts. We had a couple of our bigger contracts pay them off. You'll also notice for our delinquent accounts that do not have contracts, there's a hundred and forty-three of them. It increased by one. We had a large increase of twenty-six thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. That was, we found three warehouses that were not on utility accounts. They purchased or they did the connections, they built the warehouses and then never came in to pay for it. They're all owned by the same person. They've already been contacted. Legal's been involved and they've actually now contacted the city. So we're in the process of retrieving that. So that is why there's a large increase.
How long have they been built since they have been?
Uh, one was in eighteen or nineteen. One, I believe, was in twenty, and I think one was in twenty-one or twenty-two. Oh, they have been. Yes. It's for going all the way back to retrobacked.
Thank you.
Um, the businesses you'll see on there, we have our normal ones. That last one, the family has reached out to us. They want to reopen that restaurant. And so they're going to be working with the city to get that, um, back all paid off so that they can reconnect their services with us.
On that one, uh, Mr. Yara, isn't that, that the Mr. Sees? That's the one you're talking? Was it there, I had heard there was a issue with their lines coming, uh, having issues with the wall behind, um, the newspaper, Mr. Bermones, have you heard?
Yes, talked to the owners that own the property where Nogales International is, is based out of. And I myself drove over there and I guess there is a potentially a broken sewer line that leads, that's in the parking lot of Mr. Sees that leads to the street where it's connected. And I guess it is leaking and it is, uh, going underground and pushing the wall into the building there where Nogales International is at. So contingent upon fixing it and I'll get it together with Mr. Yara and Mr. Arzanas to make sure that that is fixed before any of these services are connected.
Oh, absolutely. We will not do anything until we know that that's taken care of.
Thank you.
For letting me know.
Thank you.
We had no employee payouts for September. For the fuel report for August, you'll see I did change the dates to twenty-three, twenty-four. We also have the total that amount spent plus the total gallons. So now you can see how that compares. So August of this year, we paid out a hundred and thirty-three thousand sixty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents and used thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-one gallons of fuel. And then it's August of, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, it was a hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. And we used thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six gallons of fuel. And we need to remember that it's both unleaded and diesel. So diesel is expensive. I know, for instance, like our fire department mainly runs on diesel. So both, these amounts include both. So it's not just like our little cars driving around town. It's our big fire trucks. So I'll continue to do both the monetary amount spent a month plus the gallons so we can compare. Any questions on that part? Thank you.
Next item, discussion items. Number, uh, A, discussion and possible action update on Unisource Payment Office. That is from Councilman Doyle.
The reason I put that on, so legal could give us, uh, a little more feedback on the agreement that we have with Unisource. And, and also the contract that are, or other issues that are there as far as them having a place where residents can go pay, which was supposed to be, if I understood, an office, not just a payment window. But, but maybe you can bring us up to date on that and see how much, uh, how much time is left on that agreement or contract.
The franchise agreement that, uh, Unisource has of the city of Nogales requires that it shall maintain an office within the corporate limits. But it doesn't define what that office is and what it does and how big it should be and so on and so forth. So, um, Unisource at some point, uh, made a determination that it wasn't necessary to have a payment office where people could go in there and, and make payments in person. As a result of that, I think, I believe it was two thousand sixteen or seventeen, the city of Nogales sued Unisource, uh, for violation of that franchise agreement. And as a result of that lawsuit, they entered into an agreement where Unisource had to maintain a payment office where people can come in and, and pay in cash. That agreement terminates in June thirtieth, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And after that, um, they have no obligation to, uh, maintain that type of office unless we can convince them otherwise. The franchise agreement, uh, expires in two thousand and twenty-nine. And at that point, again, the city is probably going to want to address that issue.
So we really have less than a year. Is it, now, is there that, is that office in operation right now that?
It, it's in operation now. It's in, in operation, I think, for the last two or three months. It was closed during the, the COVID, um, ep- episode, right? It, it had been open before pursuant to the agreement, but there was a period of time there that it was, uh, closed be- because of the COVID restrictions. But it has reopened about three, about three months ago.
You mentioned the lawsuit, uh, and I recollect, uh, I was mayor at the time. And there was a sum of money that they had to give the city for, I guess, reneging or not fulfilling their obligation. Do you recollect how much that was?
They, the, Unisource had to pay the city a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So they'll be, they'll be with that, with that, at least that payment office till June of next year.
June thirtieth, two thousand.
End of June. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments on that? Thank you. We move on to discussion item B, discussion and possible exit downtown development, uh, project. Mr. Tapia.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. Let me open the PowerPoint. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to present, uh, idea vision for downtown Nogales. As you know, um, two years ago, the city council, actually, three years ago, city council approved the general plan, two thousand twenty vision. And also the citizens of, uh, Nogales also ratified the general plan. So based on that, this discussion tonight is going to be on that vision, directed to downtown redevelopment. And also, um, discuss the opportunities that we can, uh, actually start investigating in downtown area. And of course, we have the challenges as well. One of the challenges we know for sure is the flood plain. But the key issue having the general plan adopted is to start doing the implementation. The goals and the vision of the general plan, uh, that's the key. Also, tonight's discussion is going to focus on the implementation phase and the redevelopment area. So you mentioned the gen- the vision twenty twenty general plan. That's going to be part of our discussion. The geographic boundaries, uh, we don't know for sure if this project that we, uh, discussing tonight is going to be how big. It's only along Morley Avenue, how far north and of course on the borderline. But we don't know how far west or east. We like to, uh, focus the, uh, the project. The challenges I mentioned, um, opportunities, funding. Of course, to be able to do something, uh, concrete, uh, for the future, we need to start looking into how to fund, uh, this project. Now, also, as part of the, um, discussion, we have, uh, the idea of forming a committee to be able to, um, get to get ideas, brainstorming, uh, local people, property owners, business owners, developers or architects, engineers, uh, to be able to focus on this area and discuss ideas for the future. At the end, uh, discussion, uh, questions and direction from you, uh, what was, will be the next steps. So, so by state law, the city, uh, cities in Arizona are required to, to adopt the general plan. So that's already done, uh, three years ago. But now the, the focus is going to be what to do with that plan. By law, also, the city is required to, um, present once a year what has been done during those ten years. The, the plan is only required to be ten years and updated, keep the same or do some changes. So every year we need to come and present to you, probably my department, uh, present was, what kind of projects we've completed during that year. So every year, maybe at the end of the year, present. We, we did this project according to the goals of the general plan. And year by year, we're supposed to be implementing the general plan goals and vision, step by step. So tonight, uh, as part of the general plan, we have a thirteen elements. As you can see on that list, uh, we had the, uh, the, the grow areas, land use element. The, the one focus tonight is going to be the economic development element. That's a new element. It was not there ten years ago. The, uh, the cultural heritage and historic element. That's really critical element because we're going to discuss or talk about the value, the value of the buildings we have in downtown area, uh, and the importance of keeping those and, and, uh, enhancing the downtown area. But the focus is going to be number three and number five, those two. So in a lower level, we talk, um, we mentioned the vision of the general plan. At a lower level, as part of the grow areas, um, the, the element of the grow areas focuses in redevelopment area. For example, if we develop Mor- Morley Avenue, that's going to be the element, implementing that kind of, uh, objective under the, uh, grow areas element. And of course, the infill areas, uh, in this case, uh, we have a vacant piece of land in the, uh, in the city, not only in, in downtown area, but also with other city, uh, other properties in the, in the city limits. The infill areas is to actually focus and develop. For example, in, in Morley Avenue, the, uh, the southeast corner of Morley and, uh, Court Street, the vacant piece of property that it was demolished, uh, last month, that area now can be called infill parcel. So we can actually create something new there, uh, and be able to help the Morley Avenue corridor, uh, under this potential project. As I mentioned, the, uh, we don't know yet how big we can actually create this project. It's going to be all the way to the court, building and all the way down to the borderline. And, uh, on the west side, because we don't know yet how big is going to be the, uh, the concini proventry, uh, development. We're not sure how far west we can go. But, uh, at this point, it's just the discussion, preliminary discussion, how far we can go north, east, and west. And we create a mapping, uh, mapping the area and focus on those specific locations. And one of the challenges that I mentioned in the beginning is the, of course, the, uh, the flood plain that we had, the regulations was, was adopted that the, uh, the city of Nogales provided, uh, by resolution that the county managed the flood plain, uh, regulations. And they, and they do. But one of the things that they came, uh, just last week, and probably you know already, uh, it was, uh, a revision that it was done to actually eliminate the, the floodway along Morley Avenue. So that potentially can help us, uh, bring in more businesses or, or companies willing to spend money. Because the flood, the floodway before it was as no build area. You cannot build in the floodways. And now by doing that elimination of the floodway, uh, just requiring the elevation, the floor elevation, it may be able to help us. But right now, we don't know exactly. I was talking to Mr. Guerra earlier. Are we going to study it? Because that's, this is going to be implemented in next, next year, on February of next year. That's going to be active. So by the next three months, we should be able to, uh, provide more information to potential companies or businesses trying to locate here. There is some, um, opportunities that. that we have now, that we didn't have before. Now, about the opportunities and strategies. I just put examples, what we can do as part of our discussion. For example, the facade improvement program. Something like that can be done, like the example to the left. There's a building that was the model of the facade and be able to create a different building architecture or at least to follow the historic value of that building and recreate the facade from the past and create like outdoor barriers in the front. Something like that, it can be done through strategic zero interest loans. It's only an example, but it's something that I had done before in other places, like in Somerton. And some businesses took advantage of that, but it's something that we can do here. It's only an example, but it's something that we can do. Sales tax revenues, like I was mentioning, Jay mentioned earlier. We can also do like a benchmark, how much revenue we getting right now on Morley Avenue, all those businesses, and have a benchmark. If we do implement some ideas, bring in more businesses, create more activities in downtown, what was the value two years ago and now? And we can start developing a strategy year by year. If the revenues are going up, no change. So we can be like a benchmark to identify if the work we're doing is working. Because we need more revenues in the city. But this area 40 years ago was, or maybe more, 50 years ago, was very active. More business were there, more revenue would come into the city. But changes in the economy and businesses going on the west side, Maripos Avenue. Of course, it happened in many cities. Now, the key is how we're going to bring it back. In many cities in Arizona and the US, they have been doing strategies in downtown areas to bring back the past but at the same time, bring more revenues to the city. So those are ideas, outdoor parties, like I mentioned. Those are done in San Diego, Tempe, Somerton, Yuma. Those are places that we increase activities for like restaurants, coffee shops, to create more people coming into the area, people, cause people. You see people in one area and parties automatically, I don't know psychology it is, that people tend to gravitate to more people and go into those areas. So the idea eventually to create that kind of environment along Morley Avenue. The welcome downtown gateway, that's pretty, it's not new, but it creates an entry point into downtown. I'm going to show you examples in a minute. But the idea is to create like an entrance to an area that you coming in and you welcome people into activities, special events or special businesses, something like that. That the intent of those arches. These are examples that have done very successfully in other places by improving sidewalks, make it wider. Now, we have issues in Morley Avenue. I was talking to Mr. Guerra too as well about the ADA compliance that in some areas in Morley Avenue, we're not meeting the ADA compliance. So as part of this project, potentially, we should be able to look into grants to help us with that, to comply with ADA for walking, walking areas, the ramps, wide sidewalks. By doing that, not only we create the environment for walking, but also to expand the sidewalks to create outdoor barriers, outdoor dining activities, not only for restaurants, but also retail stores be able to display things outside. So that's the intent also of putting wide sidewalks in downtown areas. So those are examples of gateways going, coming into downtown focus point areas. I took photos of Morley Avenue. As you can see, some of the buildings there, they need some kind of a facade improvements. And by doing that facade improvement program, we should be able to help the property owners. If it's money the issue, then we can do some kind of zero interest loans. And then maybe a couple of years, three years terms. And then be able to review the design facades and like a design review, kind of in planning. Check the facade, if it meet the requirements of after we create kind of design guidelines. And be able to help the property owners to design the buildings, the facades. That'll be something that we can do as well. These are examples, maybe you recall the movie The Hangover Tree. And this kind of activities, not only this was done for a week, these kind of activities are done in downtowns all over the US now. So it's nothing new. In this case, the idea in Nogales to do the movie, it was to create this kind of environment. People, calling people, people walking, people buying, people eating, sitting, talking. And that's the idea eventually, to create that kind of environment in downtown Nogales, which was, I was told, that it was the activities back a long time ago. I don't remember, I was told that. Again, these are examples as well, the same movie. They recreate a little piece of Tijuana. So now, the potential funding. So how can we actually start operating like this? As you know, not only it takes time, patience, but it also takes money. Money can come from the city, state, county, or even the property owners as well. Because by doing this kind of redevelopment, not only helps the activities in downtown Nogales, but also creates equity for the property owners. Something I was involved in downtown Tempe, back many years ago. We created downtown Tempe Assessment District. Basically, the idea was to, with the agreement of the property owners, create an assessment district and do a tax, collecting taxes from the properties, but getting the money from them and invest it on the maintenance of downtown Tempe. And they love it, even up to these days, that was like 20 years ago. So it's working very well. As you can see, downtown Tempe is not the same place I was 20 years ago. It continues evolving. But it takes time, but eventually, we need to start at one point. The other idea, the ARPA funds, I put it here just for discussion, but that will be up to you to design. CTV funds, we use other places, CTV funds for sidewalk improvements, parking, landscaping, and that's allow CTV funds to do that. I know in Nogales, we use software streets implements, payment, but it's also downtown redevelopment is also can be used CTV funds. Grants, of course, during the infrastructure program by the federal government, we can use those funds, grants, to green the infrastructure in Long Morley Avenue downtown area to create, to install more fiber optic and also to create Wi-Fi access to the Morley Avenue for free. So people can actually go into the placita, into the outside businesses and be able to do their business or the school or whatever the case may be. But the intent is to create that kind of environment for people to come and do business in downtown Nogales and they have a free access to internet. And hopefully, it's a secure access. As you know, also, many years ago, when I was here 10 years ago, I started working with the Bowman Hotel renovation. And now, I was glad that it was completed. But si se puede. And with a vision and creativity plus funding sources, por supuesto, si se puede. We can do this in downtown Nogales. Like I said, it takes money, but it takes creativity, passion and the effort from not only the city staff, but city council and the community, the property owners to get it done. Right now, we have, it's only, I was able to start a list of potential committee members. As you can see on the list, Chamber of Commerce, Olivia, Ian Zacc Kramer, Mary Darling, she agreed to also, she's asked to help as a resident in the area. Patricia Rodriguez, also, she says yes, for Nogales Community Development Corporation. And a property, I don't have a name, but I talked to Jaime Chamberlain before, but I didn't get a yes yet. But if he say yes, it will be nice because he knows what's going on in the port and also by the concini proventry renovations. I talked to him before, he's very knowledgeable about it. So hopefully, he will be a good member of this committee. Sadjarah also said yes, is property owner, interested in redevelopment. He's working in some parcel right now with me. So hopefully, he can help us as part of ideas. Nico Panasopoulos, also, know the community, is also willing to help to different ways. Roberto Gavara also told me yes, he can help us. Right now, he told me he's working to provide some kind of a fiber optic in the area. So I don't know the extent of the project he's working, but it's a good timing, he can help us as well. We would like to have another property owner. And also, potentially, it would be nice if we can get someone from the Border Patrol, Customs or GSA, that they knows about what's going on in the port, I mean, on the renovations that coming in the future. Maybe Mayor, you can help us to get someone there. So that's a potential list of committee members. And one of the things that is typical in other cities that I work and that I saw before is that we tend to do plans, then put them in the shell. And stay there for years. There was a study in Nogales in 2009. But now, I think it's time to get it done. We put the effort, we should be able to continue. Like I say, it's not going to be one year, it's going to be years. But we need to start working on this. So I just put a timeline there just for your review. And it can be expanded eventually. But I would like to meet with the committee members. After you give me direction that this list is okay, you give me other names that you would like to see on the list for the committee members. And I would like to meet with them by October 17. Hopefully, so we can form the committee and then start doing the meetings eventually to start talking about ideas and how we can start the process. And potentially, just I include here, the first meeting could be by the week of October 30. So during that discussion with the committee members, to creating a schedule based on their own work schedule, family, whatever, that create a long-term schedule that we can meet. And also talk about always based on the general plan 2020 vision, aligning the goals and the objectives. Like I said, we need to provide a report every year from the general plan, what has been done during that year. So it would be critical to have those kind of goals. City council update, I put it here on November 21st. After the first meeting, if this happening, and then we can provide an update by November 21st and like a summary report, based on the meeting that we have with the committee members, ideas, and then present to you what we discussed. And the rest could be after that. I don't know yet, but something that we can do. So right now, that's my brief presentation. And hopefully, maybe right now, we can discuss. I need to have a direction, provide discussion and direction. Maybe Mr. Bermeuris can help us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You know, for years and years and years, born and raised in Nogales, we always thought about what are we going to do with the downtown area? There's ideas, there's investors, how are we going to get them down here? I know there's a plan, there was a plan. Ironically, a couple of months ago, when Mr. Tapia came back to Nogales, we talked about a vision, a mutual vision that we both have. Ironically, we have the same vision. And we need to put our money where our mouth is and make sure that we renovate and make the downtown area what it should be, what it is in other cities. But we need to roll up our sleeves and get to work. And like Mr. Tapia says, you know, we make these plans since 2009, they're on the shelf. That's no longer going to happen. And we're going to put these plans to work. And we're going to reinvent the downtown area. You know, there's no reason why we can't have monthly food truck deployments, for lack of a better word, bands down there at Karen's Park. You know, like we see these Christmas stories, these Christmas movies with lights and Christmas trees. And there's no reason why we can't do that. So again, ironically, Mr. Tapia and I have the same vision. And we need to get to work and we will get to work. So there's an opportunity with ARPA funds, that's an option for to use these funds to re-enhance or enhance the downtown area. Mr. Tapia, that was a great presentation and I'm pretty sure they will get this done soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bermeuris, also, Mr. Tapia. I know that I've been in deep conversations with Victor Gavara from Unisource on looking at the power, you know, charges for the electric vehicles around downtown. So and not just downtown, even Mariposa and other areas in the city. So give you a little homework, just try to look at areas where you think well, we could be more usable. You know, I look at, you know, places where people could park and charge their cars. And at the same time, you know, that hour or two hours that's going to take them go down, you know, eat something or shop in our stores and stuff like that. But I've got a meeting, I don't have the date right now, but I'll look it up and let you know. And see what we're, you know, what he has in ideas and all that. And give you more information later.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Vice President.
I just want to echo some of the things that the city manager said, you know, about the residents waiting so long for this kind of project to come to life. You know, they, every year, they talk about the downtown area, about the businesses dying in Nogales. So we have a great opportunity right now to work on this. I'm very thankful that Mr. Tapia has the experience and the expertise in these areas because he's done this for Mesa and is it San Luis or?
Tapia, Somerton.
Somerton, yeah, I'm sorry, I always get them confused. And he's worked on similar projects and that's going to help a lot. We have the opportunity, we have the community involvement. You know, that's going to be a big part of it. I know that for many years, this was a vision of Mr. Neil Sermon. You know, he's always concentrating on the downtown area and reviving some of the buildings downtown. And I think we should follow that footprint and try to make the best of it with what we've got right now. And maybe later on, like Mr. Tapia said, you know, start looking for some grants and other funding resources that we can bring to this project. And then make the downtown area more enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. Thank you for putting this together. But like all plans, you know, money's not tied to them, right? We know that a little bit about. We know that a little bit about the federal government dropping off our migrants there without tying money or a lot of money. So with, you know, I suggest that you really be bold with this plan because, you know, every time we run for office, we say the same thing. We're gonna improve downtown and we, you know, we hear the same rhetoric. But improving means infrastructure, not just events, but infrastructure. It's fair that, that we as citizens put some of the tax money, I think you mentioned earlier, aside. And so we could funnel some of this money, tax money into improving downtown. That way, we designate funds because we can talk all we want about improving downtown in terms of infrastructure. We talked about using ARPA funds, we talked about all of that, nothing's been done yet. And nobody's fault, it's just time has passed by very quickly. And we've got, and we've had some turnover in city managers and so forth. So now you have the vision, you, I don't think there's someone on the dais that would disagree with this thorough plan of yours. But if you could just be bold with the committee members, you, you have experienced members there, business owners. And you have, you know, just other people that are not necessarily business owners, but they have great ideas. They can think outside the box. But I hope that in the year or so, we can, you can come back. I know you have the timeline there of bringing information, but that we see, at least in lighting down downtown, we see some nice, you know, I don't know, you, you've got, I can give you a lot of ideas like all of us can. But the ideas are there, but tie the money to it. And I'm not, you know, an expert in that area, but I know that other municipalities tie money to it, to certain projects. And that way, that money is allocated just to use for improving the infrastructure, beautification projects downtown. Because we'll continue to talk about it if money's not tied to the project.
Yeah, Congressman Montiel, you're right. If we can do something like that, like a creative district, that's why I mentioned the boundaries. We don't know how big the boundaries.
Yeah.
When we create the boundaries, it could be an assessment that we can be approved by city council to dedicate those revenues coming from that district and put them back into the area to start continuing revolving the maines, the improvements of the area, the grants, the city funds, and put them together to make it work.
Yeah.
And yes, that would be a good idea.
If I could just have a follow-up, because I know that the buildings are owned, we, we hear the same stories, they're owned by certain business owners. And of course, we're not gonna pay to improve those buildings, right? I mean, we could, we should first talk about the, the park, Karen Park, the lighting and so forth. If we could just, that's just my opinion, we could just start there and then we can open it up. You know, start small, but you know, small ideas become big ideas and projects.
Yeah, I mean, it can be done, it's matter of a.
Bueno, si se puede.
One, yeah.
Ah bueno, si se puede, gracias.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Montiel, I'm sorry. One of the things that I talked to Mr. Tapia to start it off is, is looking to installing one of those big Nogales signs somewhere on Karen's Park, somewhere in the downtown area, like all these cities have to go take a picture for tourism and, and everything else for keepsakes. So that's one of the first things that I wanna start working on. And again, lucky that Mr. Tapia is, is on board with us. As a matter of fact, we, we talked about the day we were talking about, I said, you know, did you watch Hangover 3? I says, you know, I envision Nogales, the downtown area be like that. And he says, funny, you're saying that because I have those pictures in my presentation. So believe me, we, we will get to work and this, this will be, this will be done.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Tapia. And so, you know, like Councilwoman Montiel said, you know, let's look, maybe start at fix it and then, and then we'll do the improvement. Okay, we go to item C, discussion, direction, possible action, water sewer fee study. Mr. Borean.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in 2015 was our last rate study. It was actually, from what I gathered, it was activated in 2016. It was agreed back then that it'd be a 3% increase for five years. However, that wasn't ever done. 16 went by, 2017, 18, and not only till 2019 was it the first increase of, I believe, 3%. When we were doing the, our, our budget, we had the budget talks. Mr. Barson has pointed out that we're, that by next year, our water department is gonna run out of money. And that's because we have very old infrastructure. We have water leaks on a daily basis. You compound that with, with inflation. And so eventually, we're gonna, we're gonna spend more than what we're collecting. I believe Mr. Bermudas knows how many, how many leaks we have a week average. And I, we, you guys have a copy of, of certain quotes here from different companies. And I urge that, you know, in discussion, that it's not about raising the rates. We're gonna have to raise the rates regardless, but we need, we need a study, we need to have a study before to see what exactly where we're at. Right now, we're flying, we're flying blind. There, we don't have the in-house staff to figure this one out. So we need to pay for, 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 for a water rate and sanitation study, which I know they're not cheap, but I think that if we let this one just, if we don't take care of this issue, come next year, we're not gonna be able to balance the budget. So if we, I don't know, Ms. Moment has two, two quotes. Yes, would you mind stepping up and explain a little bit?
So in your packets, you received the two quotes that I received. I reached out to different cities within Arizona. And these were the two companies that came back from every city that I reached out to. They've either used the 65th North or they've used Willdan. Willdan is the one that has done our previous rate studies in 15, and I believe in 10, and possibly the one even prior to that. There is quite a difference in the two quotes, if you look at the amounts. A lot of it with Willdan is because they already have a lot of our information. They don't have to start with zero and build, they've already built it. So it's completely up to how the council wants to move forward. But most of the cities in Arizona that I've reached out to use one of these two companies.
What was the cost of, Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What, what was the, the cost on 2015, do you remember?
So in 2015, Willdan did two different studies. They did the rate study and they did a non-rate study. The rate study costs about 18, 19,000, can't remember the exact number. And then the non-rate study was about 25,000. So I believe that was the first time we'd had a non-rate study done on putting in the meters, everything except for the actual rate study, like the actual rates. But it was everything else that deals with our enterprise funds.
A follow-up.
Go ahead.
So the, the other company, the, the 60, 65th North, it's a lot more expensive because they would have to start from scratch, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how much more expensive are they?
Well, we're looking at.
Forty-nine.
Yeah, forty-nine thousand compared to about twenty-five-ish, I think it was.
Okay. All right, so in, in your opinion, Ms. Moment, it's, I know that last time, I think, I can't remember what council member asked you, how we're doing as far as collecting or how the finance department was as far as the water department. And you said they were very healthy. And I believe that we, we are healthy in the sense that we are collecting a lot of, a lot of money.
Yes.
But there's the other side of the coin, that we're also spending a lot of money because of, we have very old infrastructure.
Yes.
And our customers demand a better water service. In order for us to provide a better water service, we need to address this issue, would you not agree? As, as far as finding out if we're charging or if we're charging, if we have the correct rate as far as us charging the water services and sanitation and all that. Because it's been a while. So once we came out of COVID, everything was maybe twice as, as expensive. And so we're not keeping up. We, we might be collecting a lot of money. However, we, we're spending it a lot faster, am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Congressman Doyle.
Well, I know you weren't here at the.
Thank you.
Back then, but aside from the studies that were made, there was, they implemented changing the meters all over town to bring in, you know, better, the infrastructure of charging and whatnot, keeping tabs. And at the same time, they were changing quite a few lines. Where, where is it that most of these bad lines are now?
Mr. Bermudas, can you please inform Councilman Doyle approximately how many, how many water lines or how many water breaks we may have a month or a week? Can tell you that we average about one or two water leaks a, a day, especially on weekends, nights. My hats off to these water workers because they, they're working their tails off, making sure that, that the service is not, it's, it's constant for the, for the residents. Infrastructure around the city, Mr. Doyle, is, is, is old and it will get older. One of the issues that we're taking care of right now is obviously rural road and Rancho Grande. However, there, if you ask me if there's exigency as far as to, are we, are our funds running low right now? My answer is, is event, is not immediately, however, they will. And so we need to prepare for that, for the coming years, by next year, the, the year following that. However, my opinion is if we don't do anything right now, then even, even as far as to the study, because you can ask me, okay, so all kinds of questions, but unless we have the study, I, I cannot give you answers to something that I don't, I don't know. So that's basically what the study is. So the study does, does not necessarily mean that, that we will or you will raise the rates. It means that you'll be informed as far as to the needs and comparisons with our rates, our past rates, our current rates and rates from other municipalities as far as to keeping up with the older, aging infrastructure.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Gracias.
What is the recommendation from staff at this point? Do we proceed with a study? Do we wait? What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we proceed with a study to get, again, be informed as far as to what decisions are gonna be placed on, on your table. Because those are hard decisions. Every time you're gonna raise rates, it's always a hard decision for your constituents. Especially during these times, especially there is no perfect time to raise rates. However, our infrastructure is getting older as we speak. And at least you will be informed as far as to your options. Without a rate study, again, the options we can assume, you know, as, as far as to end guess. But I think once those rates and that rate study is put before you, then you can make a informed decision as far as to, you wanna wait, you wanna go ahead. It's up to you. But without information, we can't make a decision or you can't make a decision as far as to what your options are.
My question, Mr. Bermudas, you know, I know we have Mr. Yer, I don't see Mr. Barson as here, but we have, you know, we're, we're already looking at, you know, doing, finishing rural road in Rancho Grande. We got, we got Western and what's the other one by the? Castellana, and there's others, areas already identified. You know, I don't think right now raising the rate, you know, it's gonna be enough from, from the community to get millions of dollars. You know, I'm thinking, you know, maybe we look at the, the plan that we have already. You know, and basically, you know, I've been digging, we've been digging, trying to get, you know, more funds outside the community. Cause you know, the way the cost is right now, it's basically lots of millions of dollars per every street that we, that we redo the, the water lines. And continue with the paving, you know. I know, Council, that's my opinion. I think, you know, we won't find a solution from, from, from the dollars of, of the, of the community. Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Yes, Mayor, one of the, the other areas that we got developed or put new infrastructure was all the way from Crawford through McNapp up to Western a few years back. I mean, when I'm talking about a few years when I was mayor, which wasn't that long ago, really. So there's been some areas that we've done and I'd like to, you know, get an update on, on all those areas that have. And again, we always work to get the funding from outside to do these projects. There's no reason why we shouldn't be doing it now. And I believe that the money's out there and different ranch, CBPG funds, or anything that, you know, that they've provided in the past. We just need to put those applications in and, and, and also take that into consideration before we start thinking of raising revenue or, or rates. Or if we do, it, again, let's take all those factors into consideration before we make, you know, before we start jumping the gun. But, but then again, yes, I believe a study would be one of the things that would help bring things together. Just thought I'd mention that, that aside from the study, make sure that, that they look at those things and not just compare where we're at or what the rates are in other communities around us. You know, I, I'd, I'd like to make sure that we have some input also, or at least they bring us up to date before they make their final decision on a rate study so that we can also help guide them and direct them and, and, and what we have here in this community and the needs. So that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Gracias.
I'm gonna allude to the statement made by Mr. Bermudas. And the reason we would be doing a rate study would be to educate ourselves because we can't go into this blind and we're not just talking infrastructure. We've been losing money and we're probably under billing for our services for years now. So it is a hard decision, but we can't make a decision without knowledge. My other thing on that, where would this funding come to pay for a study and we have the funds available?
We, we have the funds available, Councilman. One of the things to, to just clear something up, I mean, your decision is your decision, but my responsibility is to inform you of your options. So what the rate study would do and what the implementation of that rate study did last time is that for, I guess, lack of a better term, it increases the, your credit rating of the city, which is, you, you mentioned, go outside and get some grants. That's exactly why we were able to get the WIFA grants last time because through our rate studies, they figured that we had enough money to pay them back. So if we wanna go out to get CDPG or get further WIFA grants, we need to prove that we are able to pay those grants back. Again, that's just my recommendation. At the end of the day, whatever decision you wanna make is, is yours, obviously, but it's my responsibility to make sure that, that you are aware and, and I give you the options and information that you still need to make that decision.
Councilman Borean.
Also, we gotta look at, at the city charter. We need to make sure that, that the, the finance department or water department in this case is paying for itself. So if we're losing money, Mr. Machado, would you be able to help us out on that? As far as us keeping, you know, making sure that we're, we're self-sustaining department? Is that, because that's a city charter issue, isn't it?
The utility fund is what they call it, an enterprise fund. And as an enterprise fund, it doesn't make profit, but it's, it, the rates are there to. to, to provide the services, but not at a gain. You don't make money from it. The rates are supposed to continue the, 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 the operation of that, of the, providing that type of services. The rate study will tell you, again, what we're charging, and the charge is based on not only what you provide, what it costs to provide, but also the infrastructure and so on and so forth. And they'll try to build that into the, into the study. Then it will be up to the council to determine whether or not you're going to implement that study or, and how do you implement it, because there may have, there may be in that study, for example, a recommendation that so much money be invested into infrastructure, but that'll give the council the knowledge then to be able to find alternative sources of that, the, the recommended improvements to the infrastructure without building it into the rate, the rate itself. So all it'll do is give you knowledge to decide what you're going to do. It doesn't bind you in, in any manner whatsoever. The only legal requirement is that, that enterprise fund, this fund, is supposed to maintain itself. And, and that's why you have the studies to get to that point. As I understand it, from, at this current rate, it's not maintaining itself.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Montiel.
On that note, why isn't it maintaining itself? Is it all, is it because the water rates are low? Or is it because we have exhausted everything else and everything in the finance department? Right. So my question is, have we exhausted before we raised these or asked the community to pay higher water rates? Have we looked at internally if everything is running the way it's supposed to be, people paying their water? We just heard two warehouses or three haven't been paying water for years. So here we are going out and asking the community to pay, you know, whatever, 25,000 or 49,000, but internally, have we exhausted, you know, looking into if everything's running smoothly and we're charging people and people are paying?
Councilwoman, I think we're constantly doing that. In the report, we're constantly making sure that we're putting people on contract, that people are back paying or, or paying their, their back bills. However, that, that does take time. If you look at the enterprise funds on the report that, that we have, sometimes, you know, where, where there's more money going out, that's going in and certain amount, and certain funds, and I'm not sure which one it was up hand, but we're moving money around within those funds. However, what I don't want to do is, I guess, for, for lack of a better term, is managed by crisis and, and make sure that, that, that you guys have that information in front of you to make, again, an educated decision. So, so just because we're doing the, the rate study does not mean that it should be implemented. However, you'll be informed to make an informed decision as far as to what your next steps are. But again, that's, that's totally your decision.
I can have a follow-up? But, but if we're going to pay, $25,000 is a lot for me, you know, and if we're going to pay that money just to do a study so that, you know, knowledge is more powerful, I understand that, so we can do, make informed decisions, I get all that. But that $25,000 that will be spent on a study is, we're going to look at the study like we look at all studies, and then we're going to, most likely, the reason you want to study is because you're saying right now that we're not competitive, we're not charging enough water. Not, I mean, that's what I gather.
Well, not competitive, actually, the rate study is going to be comparative with other cities, however, it does not necessarily mean that we're behind, we're above, it's just giving you a comparison.
To other similar?
To other similar sized cities.
Exactly.
And the rate studies. However, every municipality has their different needs, and, and that's what we really need to look at. Again, the rate study does not mean anything. You can make a decision right now to, whatever you want to do with that rate study, wait or implement it, or if you decide to, you know, go ahead with a rate study, again, doesn't, you know, you can wait on the, on the implementation of the rate hike, I guess, for lack of a better term. But I think, I think you'll be more informed, I think the community will be more informed at these decisions, and actions are not made arbitrarily. Besides that, I mean, in order to raise anything, to make any movement with, with the rate studies either up and down, there has to be, by law, legally, my understanding, there has to be a rate study done before that. So it's not like if we can do an in-house study, I guess, and all of a sudden say, you know what, we're going to raise these rates, that's, that's not legally possible. Again, these are options that you have on the table. You direct me what you want to do and, and we'll get that done.
Well, Mayor, since we're talking about asking the, the mayor, the, the residents to pay for a rate study, so legally, there has to be a rate study done before we raise rates, Mr. Machado? Yeah, okay. So today, we're deciding if, if we're going to pay $25,000 for a rate study to be done tonight. I mean, we're here to talk about it and then vote on it.
If that's what you want, Councilwoman, what Councilman Bonilla has been asking for the last couple of meetings is that we get him a quote as far as to how much it would cost, and, and that's, that's, that's what I did here. Whatever actions you decide to take, it's, it's, it's your decision, but I'm, I'm complying with Councilman Bonilla's request to give him the quotes as far as to how much it would cost.
Gracias.
I think the longer we wait, the higher the rate increase will come out a few years or months later, and if there is. It doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a rate hike, but if there is, we can implement it in increments, maybe. There's a lot of ways to go around this. Doesn't mean that we're automatically going to raise people's rates, but we got to be aware of where we stand and what the future holds. If we don't act, then we're just putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound and we'll treat it as disaster management when it happens, and, and we don't want to do that, we don't want to be behind the eight, but we want to get ahead of the curve and make sure that we could take care of our residents and our water. That's a valuable resource, and yes, it's pricey, it's probably not the right time, but we got to make those hard decisions for our community, because if we just sit and wait, it's going to creep up on us, and next thing you know, $20 increase a month, that's a lot of money. But if we are prepared and can maybe implement it in increments, if there is a need for a rate hike, it might come back and say, no, you just need to spend more on infrastructure, we look for more grants, we do whatever we can. If we put $25,000 into the water or utility account, would it make a dent right now? It would be best used in a rate study, because realistically, it is a lot of money, but the way we're, we're losing money in that enterprise, I think we're going to be in trouble down the road. Thank you.
Councilman Doh.
Yes, I agree with, with Councilman Doh here that, you know, water is, is, is like liquid gold nowadays, but I'd like to know how the city dropped the ball on these three big businesses, commercial business or warehouses over the last four years, that they hooked up to city water and nobody was aware that they were using city water or what?
It's just a sewer account. There's no water, so there's no meter.
Okay.
It was hooked up through just a sewer account, and it was through an internal audit that was done within revenue that we discovered that these three are, they are connected.
But don't we have anyone in charge when they make new buildings and the connections that are made to realize that they're supposed to be put on, you know, by the?
They're supposed to. All three of these happened before me, so I don't really know what happened, but once it was found, as soon as it was discovered, was when we stepped in and got legal involved and?
But this was just recently?
Just recently, yes, like last month.
Four years went by.
Yes.
And that's what I was listening also to Councilwoman Montiel's concern about, maybe we need to check other areas within the city where, are we dropping the ball on other accounts? Are there other accounts that are not paying up? How do we, how do it like, how do we make sure that everybody's in the system, not out?
So with water accounts, it's easier because it's our meter. So we know if the meter's on, we know if the meter's off. Those are easier for us to, to constantly watch. When it's simply the sewer accounts, you know, we don't have a meter on your sewer account, it's only on your water.
No, no, but there's a connection when a new building is built and the city connects it.
Yes, there is. And so with these three buildings that were built, all clear on the north side of town, the sewer connection was done, and then somewhere in between, when it was connected, and when they should have come in to set up their utility accounts with us, there was a lack of communication until it was just discovered.
Well, we need to correct that lack of communication.
Absolutely, and that's what we've been working.
And this is the same owner that?
Yes, the same owner for all three.
Okay, what did I say, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
With, with legal, we, we are correcting that.
Thank you.
Councilman Gracias.
Based on staff recommendation, I move that we move forward with the study with the known provider that we've worked with before for 25K.
Any other discussion? All, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, liquor license, consideration possible action of liquor license 2023-10, approval and recommendation of insurance of liquor license for Mr. Luis Alonso Caniz Borquez for Pomos, Pomos Pizza, 3131 North Grand Avenue, Nogales, Arizona, 85621. Any discussion? All approve? All right. Yes. Motion passes. B, consideration possible action of liquor license 2023-11, approval of recommendation of the issuance of a special event liquor license applicant for Reverend Jorge Ricardo Frias, South Sale, for Sacred Heart Roman Catholic Parish, for a fundraiser, October 27, 28, and 29, 2023. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Number 10, ordinance, consideration possible action of ordinance 02, 023-09-003, an ordinance of the City of Nogales, amending ordinance of 20, excuse me, of 022, 02005-01-001, and Chapter 6 of Nogales City Code regarding the municipality cemetery.
I need to make a correction here, because Exhibit A is not attached to here.
I spent that you actually used the one that?
I prepared it, but it's not attached to here.
I'm done.
There is no Exhibit A in my copy.
Yeah.
Hold on, Michael.
Oh, yes.
Just be your copy book.
Yeah.
What we do is if we make it there on the record, that page 53 of your packet is what should be Exhibit A, and that is the amendment to the existing ordinance.
I've got page 53 on there.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying it, it's not included as an Exhibit A, it's included as, as part of one of the pages.
One of two pages.
So if you make it there on the record, you got to work.
Just say it.
In your package, it's marked as packet page 53 is Exhibit A and what you're voting on. And if we do that, then we don't have to bring it back again.
So we amend, we amended with saying page 53 will be?
If somebody would amend, so, I guess, move to amend the packet to indicate that packet page 52 is the Exhibit A to the ordinance that's being considered.
Because the ordinance is changing, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So now my question is, because when I saw it, it seems like the only thing I read more was the old rule or regulation. And now, but what's the difference? Because we don't have, we don't have the new one.
No, no, you do have.
It is, it is, but it's not identified.
It is what is, should be Exhibit A, marked as Exhibit A. Okay, but the way it's included in the packet, it's a page to the old ordinance.
Okay, the, the, the difference that I saw maybe from one, now that you're mentioning it, and I thought it was the same one.
Right.
Is that instead of, of the Public Works Director having authority over the cemetery, it'll be our city manager that'll decide which department is going to be in charge of the cemetery. Is that pretty much it?
What you're voting on is on page 53. That's the change you're work, you're voting on. And, and what that does, it gives the director, the cemetery director, which is named by the city manager, the flexibility and authority to manage the, the cemetery, because under the old ordinance, it's outdated and includes, and includes provisions regarding sales of plots that we don't have anymore and so on. And the new provision, the new ordinance allows the, the, the director, cemetery director, to enforce and regulate who gets interred at the city cemetery to try, and, and this is necessary because there were burials that were taking place without the knowledge or the permission of the city director. So this, that's what is meant, this is meant to correct.
Again, on, on, on those bases, it also said that the city or the cemetery doesn't have any more city plots to sell. Didn't it say that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
That there's no more plots available from the city. I, I read that, so, now. But what about all the other plots that are available, say, through the Knights of Patheus, the veterans? They all have plots, who's going to, who's going to control the way they provide those plots?
The, the, the city cannot control what it, what does not belong to them. So if?
Okay, so those are going to be available, but then again, the rules and regulations that are being put in place here affect that?
No, they could only affect city property, city-owned property. There's areas in, next to the city cemetery that are owned by different entities, the Elks, I don't know.
Knights of Patheus?
No, Patheus, but they have their own regulations and they have to meet state regulations, but not city regulations as applied to our property.
Okay. So how about the, the, so when they interd someone, the city has no jurisdiction over that?
That's correct.
And when the city closes the cemetery or if they put hours, it'll? it'll affect everybody in there.
Well, I, I, if, if, if access to those different portions are through city, then, then it does affect them. But they have also other access available to them if they want to develop it.
Okay. And would they be able to reach an agreement with the city in the case they need to get in before hours when, say, the gates would be closed?
I imagine they would, Councilman, but they would have to.
Go through the, the city manager, maybe?
No, the cemetery director, which is our recreation director.
Okay, thank you for clearing it up.
Councilmember Gaudíos.
I make an amendment to, on this agenda item, to label Page 53 as Exhibit A.
To the ordinance.
To the.
To the ordinance, yeah.
We need to vote on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now we need to go back to the.
Now we vote on the ordinance.
Now we go back to the ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Does the council wish to waive the second reading? It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Then we need a motion to waive the second reading.
Make a motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
And what, as a way of explanation, what that does, without the second reading, the ordinance takes 30 days to take effect. With the second reading, it's effective immediately.
11, orders. A consideration possible action of order 2023-10-048, an order of the City Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the Nogales Police Department to enter into a contract with Maniposa Community Health Center and Arizona Nonprofit Corporation until August 31st, 2024 in the amount of $20,000. That will be disbursed to the Nogales Police Department for the participation of community opioid response programs and supporting MCHC with the mission of prevention, treatment, and recovery of opioid and psychoteminal abuse. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. B, consideration possible action of order 2023-10-049, an order of the City Council of the City of Nogales approving a lease agreement with the Santa Cruz County on aging Inc. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Gaudíos.
I want to thank you, staff, Mr. Bermúdez, for moving ahead with this. It's a great step in the right direction. I hope that there's still some other ways we can help this agency and I'm sure you'll look into it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and great, great job, Mr. Bermúdez. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item C, consideration possible action of order 2023-10-050, an order of the City Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing a grant agreement between the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and the City of Nogales Police Department for funding through the 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of $10,000 to be used for body armor for the Nogales Police Department SWAT team. Any discussion? I'll, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. This is not the Governor Hobbs, right?
No.
This is a $10,000 one? Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I read it, but what, what exactly, Mr. Bermúdez, is, what is for body armor? I just, I mean.
Bulletproof vests.
Bulletproof vests.
Bulletproof vests for the SWAT team.
Okay, because I know if you, they've been asking for that.
Yes.
For a while back. Okay, so that's what it's specifically for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Apparently, item D.
If you would table that first.
But that's a table because there's still some work on it, but. You okay with that, Bermúdez?
Yes.
So I move to table item D. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Item E, consideration possible action of order 2023-10-052, an order of the City of Nogales approving extension of contract between the City of Nogales and International Association of Firefighters Local 2763. Any questions?
Yep.
Go ahead.
You know I will ask a question about that. So I know that the fire union is here. Thank you for being here. I know you've been working and collaborating with legal. And is that just an extension, Mr. Bermúdez, to, to finish it? Or to add or to take out? Can you just kind of give me a little bit of update, please?
I guess Mr. Machado has been working with Mr. Gaudíos, so he can probably answer that question.
Yes, ma'am. We have an agreement. And the reason we're asking to extend it is because as part of the agreement, there is an, there's an adoption of certain sections of the personnel manual. And we've all agreed that those sections need to be revised. And so as soon as we revise those, they have to come to you. We revise them and then they have the opportunity. If they're okay with that, then, then we finalize the agreement.
Okay.
And we're working on that now.
And, and the union has no problem extending it again to clarify these.
No, no, no problem at all.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? We're good. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item F, consideration possible action of order 2023-10-053, an order of the City Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving extension of agreement between the City of Nogales and the Nogales Police Officers Association. Any discussion? All in favor? Go ahead.
For the same reason, Mr. Machado? Extending it for the same reason, personnel issue or?
I have not been working on that at agreement until Mr. Bermúdez says.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Montiel, the ex-president, who recently retired, as a couple of months ago, never brought up the contract issue. And so now we have a new board and they're, obviously they want to bring it back to the table and make sure that we take care of this as soon as possible.
Any other question? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, I move to go into executive session to discuss item G. On executive session, so it'll be known, it'll be city, city manager, legal and, and HR and council and mayor. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Move to executive session. Yes, we'll take five minutes and then go ahead.
Welcome back from executive session. We go to item G on orders, consideration and possible action of order 2023-10-054, an order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona authorizing an employment agreement with interim city manager or city manager. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
May I have a nice...
Too nice. Bye-bye.
I was no. It's... it's no.
Okay, so, what do you think, Leti?
Nay.
Motion passes. Due to the time, I think we could skip mayor's report and council report unless anybody has anything special. I only got two things. One, I talked to the mayor from Mexico, where the century lane will start fluctuating through the side of the railroad track like it's did in the past. So hopefully we won't have the jam up for the century people. And two, tomorrow we have a big baseball game here locally at six o'clock. Mayo's in Navajo and Ayala de Mexicali at 6:00 PM at Mamaya Park. Please join us. Yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment because recently, yesterday, I went and attended the domestic violence there at the courthouse. It was a very good turnout, a lot of people there, of course, the city was well represented by our police force. And I just want to say it was a nice sight to see all the people in purple, the youth with all their balloons sending them off to the sky. And they had a nice walk all the way down and the court road and through Walgreens and up Mariposa, back to the court. So anyway, I just wanted to report that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yes, I saw it. I was actually right there where the crossway is and saw it when they went by. Yes, any future agenda items, let's throw it up, bring it to Ms. Leti or whatever, Mr. Bermúdez, because we're just gonna... I'll move to agenda. All in favor? All right. I'll pose.